This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really just want to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is a responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. I would just ask right now if you would please make sure that your phone is turned to silent if you have not already done so. And really, we appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regular de Waco SD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que en todas las conferencias está disponible en la página de Waco SD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma. Así toda la información que fue descargada está disponible para todos. Por favor, apájar sus teléfonos y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartió con nosotros y su interés en Waco SD. We, as the Board of Waco Independent School District, have a code of ethics that we follow. This one is honor in conduct. We, as the Board, will always tell the truth. We will share our views while working for consensus. We will respect the majority decision as a decision of the Board, and we will base our decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. I have a distinct pleasure that I get to introduce the University High School Show Choir. Vivas... Vivas... Vivasen? Vivasen. Okay, who will be perfor... Vivace. Italian, vivace. Vivace. I know, I was like, is it Spanish? Is it it's... Vivace. Okay. Who will be performing "Let It Snow," Winter Wonderland, arranged by Alan Bigsley. I want to give a special thank you to the Directors Clinton Barano, thank you, and Jimmy Morgat for their unwav... Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. For their unwavering support and dedication in nurturing the growth of our students. Really so thankful that you guys could be here. So with that, let's let you guys kick it off.
(Music) Oh, the weather outside is frightful, but the fire is so delightful. And since we've no place to go, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. Oh, the weather outside is frightful, but the fire is so delightful. And since we've no place to go, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. Oh, it doesn't show signs of stopping, and I brought some cord for popping. But lights are turned way down low. Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. When we finally kiss goodnight, how I hate going out in the storm. But if you'll really hold me tight, all the way home I'll be warm. Oh, the fire is slowly dying, and my dear, we're still goodbyeing. But as long as you love me so, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. When we finally kiss goodnight, how I hate going out in the storm. But if you'll really hold me tight, all the way home I'll be warm. Oh, the fire is slowly dying, and my dear, we're still goodbyeing. But as long as you love me so, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. Sleigh bells ring, are you listening? In the lane, snow is blessing. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight, walking in a winter wonderland. Gone away is a new bird, here to stay is a new bird. He sings a love song as we go along, walking in a winter wonderland. In the meadow, we can build a snowman, then pretend that he is Parson Brown. He'll say, "Are you ready?" We'll say, "No, man." But you can do the job when you're in town. But you can do the job when you're in town. Later on, we'll conspire, as we dream by the fire. To face unafraid the plans that we made, walking in a winter wonderland. To face unafraid the plans that we made, walking in a winter wonderland. Snow is falling, a special... Snow is falling, wonderland.
Beautiful job, ladies. Thank you so much. As they're walking to their seats, if you would... Kind of shifting gears a little bit, but if you would please... Good job. Good job. We're going to move on to our moment of silence before we do our pledge. So, we'll let people go out real quick. So if you would please just pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, Thank you. Our pledge leaders? You want to come forward?
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Renee, did anyone sign up for public comment? Nope. Okay, if the Board would meet me in front of the dais?
Our pledge leaders tonight are Nasia Rodriguez and Avery Ruby from Altivista Elementary. Nasia is in the 3rd grade... Naasia, I'm sorry, is in the 3rd grade in her favorite subject... Nasia, I said it right the first time. I apologize. And her favorite subject is science. She's on the student leadership team and wants to be a pediatrician when she grows up. Thank you to Mom Deja Ross for being here tonight and sharing your amazing daughter Avery's in the 4th grade, and she loves math. She participates in the drama club, the spelling club, and the student leadership team. When she grows up, Avery wants to be a doctor. Thank you to Mom Kelly Ruby for being here tonight and sharing your wonderful daughter And thank you to Principal Hilton for being here tonight and sharing your incredible students Next, we have our Academic All-State and Academic All-District Award recipients. This next group of students excels both on and off the field. Our Academic All-State Award recipients are seniors with an overall GPA of 92 or above, and our Academic All-District students are seniors or juniors with an overall GPA of 90 or above. And we're going to begin tonight with University High School Cross-Country Academic All-District Savannah Reyes.
Good job.
Absent, Archili Deanda, Olivia Thomas, Emiliano Cordero, and Emmanuel O'Ginn. Tennis Academic All-State, absent Emmanuel O'Ginn, and Academic All-District Carolina Volleyball Academic All-District Chrissy De La Fuente. Football Academic All-State and Academic All-District Sebastian Sedvantes. Academic All-District Brayden Golehar. Kamari and Kendall. Eric Grooms. And Jalen Guerrero. Absent tonight are Derek Thomas, Caesar Tenorio, Justin Neal, Juan Martinez, London Smith, EJ Eccles, and Jawan Harris. And I would like to invite the university group back up with your coaches and your principals, please, to take a group picture. Thank you tonight to Coach Johnson and Coach Crane and to Principal McAdoo for being here tonight and working with these amazing students.
Tell her to get in with a picture. Where's she at? Okay, is she Waco High?
Yes.
Sarah Dix?
Yes.
Okay, I need a pin. Squeeze in tight, please.
Next, we have Waco High School Cross-Country Academic All-State Anna Hoag. Anna was also Academic All-State for tennis. For tennis, we have Academic All-State Samuel Everett. And Sarah Dix. Absent tonight are Alden Grigsby, Daniel Garner, Nate Monreal, and John Snyder. Yura Barry also received volleyball Academic All-District. Absent Natalie Madrano, Academic All-District Annie Ecker. Jackie Trevino. And absent are Alina Holmes and Kamari Jones. Football Academic All-State and Academic All-District Benjamin Johnson. TJ McMurray. Isaiah Livingston. And Jalen Goode. Absent tonight is Kishon Waits. Thank you to Coach Halle, Coach Tally, and Coach Hyder for being here tonight, as well as Principal McGruder and Assistant Principal Alberti. I'm going to invite the entire group back up to take a group photo, please. Waco High?
We may want to double, like, tell somebody to ask them to go...
All right, get in a little tighter if you can, please. A little tighter. Congratulations. I'm going to read them there. In December, the district is recognizing Highland Baptist Church as the outstanding community partner. They were not able to be with us tonight, but we have given them their award, and we have a picture for you guys on the screen. The church works very closely with Dean Highland Elementary. They host after-school programs, serving 35 students from Dean Highland. They mentor students. They serve on the Teacher Appreciation Committee. They provide Christmas gifts for teachers and administration. They also have an Adopt a Dragon program during the holiday season, and they give gifts to students who are classified as homeless or in foster care, and they provide clothing, shoes, and student-specific Christmas wishes to each of these students. And we're very grateful for their partnership. That concludes our special recognition for this evening.
We're going to give people a little bit more time to kind of file out real quick. Yeah, I think so. Okay, we'll just move on here to item number six, which is Superintendent's Report.
All right. Merry Christmas, everyone. And it's great, it was, it's been a great day, so many things happening. I have a couple of items this evening. First, I want to visit a little bit about a Waco High School Historical Advisory Committee. So we are putting together a Waco High School Advisory, Historical Advisory Committee, similar to what we did for GW Carver Middle School. And the purpose is to, for the committee to provide input to us regarding the ways that we might be able to honor the history and legacy of Waco High School and some special features within the new building. And so to kick off these efforts, I had the pleasure to meet with Betty Beard, Charlie Olson, and David Lacy. And together, these three distinguished alumni shared stories and personal memories of their high school days. They tried to keep me straight on the history of the school and how it changed over time. But regardless of their school's location or name at the time, it was really meaningful. It was a very meaningful meeting. Since that time, we have continued to reach out to more alumni to build a committee. And I want to thank former Board President Debbie Luce for her willingness to chair the committee. I met with, met with her at the beam signing this week. She is a proud graduate of the class of 1972, and I believe served on the Board for a good number of years, 10 or 12 years. And she was delighted in, to be able to do that for us. So we have our next meeting scheduled for January the 12th, and I look forward to keeping you updated on that project. Any questions about that? Nope. It should be an exciting time, just similar to what we've done already. Waco High School Milestone Celebration, so today was absolutely fantastic. A significant milestone in the construction of our new Waco High School. And as I mentioned this morning, topping out, a topping out ceremony is an age-old tradition in which the last steel beam is put into the building of a project. It's a major milestone for whoever, for everyone who's working on the project, and it signifies the groundwork being laid and the countless hours already poured into the building. For me, it was another opportunity to get, today, to get to say thank you to the many people that are bringing years of planning and design work to life and to share again how the new Waco High School is much more than just a school building. So for those of you who were able to join us today, for the, or who were able to join us earlier in the week for the beam signing event on Tuesday, you got to experience firsthand how Waco High School has and continues to be a way in which the greater community comes together. And I think Trustee Ochoa described it best when he said, "I've never been to an event that brought so many alumni, former teachers and staff, current faculty, current students, and future students all together in one place." You could feel in the air the pride and the excitement of time spent there throughout the years and the pride and excitement of the future Waco High School that will soon be here. So thank you for that, Mr. Ochoa. Well-stated. Again, want to thank our construction partners, our facility staff, and our entire communications team for all of their work to make this Waco High Milestone Celebration such a special, memorable experience. It really was a great week of celebrating Waco High School. Any comments or thoughts about the Waco High School this week?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ochoa.
I got to meet with three different folks that were in the very first class, and they were delighted and honored to be able to come back and see the beam. And it was a really touching... Two of them graduated together and went on separate ways and ended up getting married two years ago. So they came back to sign as a newlywed couple in the first graduating class. It was spectacular.
That's cool. Great story. Okay, last item I have is in regards to our retention bonuses. You all may recall that you approved these retention bonuses, kind of ongoing since we received our ESAR funding. But tomorrow, 836 of our employees will receive a total of 2.3, almost $2.4 million in retention bonuses. And those were, again, funded through ESAR and beginning back in July of 2021. Those bonuses range from $500 to $3,333. That's the third of the $10,000 bonuses that we gave to teachers. This is actually the second payment. They'll get the third payment next September as we're wrapping up the use of those funds. And of course, the amount is based on the position and which bonus that they qualify for. We had 704 teachers and/or librarians who are receiving a bonus. 579 of those get the $3,333, and 125 will get $2,500. We had 124 auxiliary staff receive a bonus. 26 will get $500. 32 are getting $750, and 66 are getting $1,000. And then we had eight police officers who qualified for a bonus. Six will get the $3,333, and two will get $2,500. And I know the bonuses are greatly appreciated by our employees, and I want to thank you again for approving those and supporting our retention efforts. Also, I want to thank HR and our payroll departments for doing all the work to make sure that those go out to our employees so that they get them in time for Christmas. And I hope they spend that money locally. That's a lot of money.
Merry Christmas. Right in time for this Christmas season.
Thank you. That's all I have.
We will move on to item number seven, information items and reports. Mr. Grant, is there, do you have any questions, discussions on that?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vidania?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Moving on to number eight, consent agenda. Mr. Grant, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vidania?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
HNI.
HNI. Okay, and Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for 8H and 8I.
I move that we approve the agenda with the exception of HNI.
Thank you, Mr. Vidania. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Do you, is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vidania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No, I just, I don't really, I just wanted more information.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll go back after this, and then we can vote on those separately. Thank you. Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item 8H, Approval of the Fee Reduction, O'Connell Robertson Architects on Selected Projects. Who's presenting, Ms. Barera? Oh, there you are. Thank you.
The podium is in a different...
The podium, yeah, in a different spot. Mr. Ochoa, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some more information on that and really say thank you. It was, what was the dollar amount on that, 700?
702,500, I think. Yeah. Yeah, 702,500.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say thanks really for continuing to try and reduce costs. I know we had that issue with Carver earlier in the year with our... So I just wanted to say thanks for that. So I just wanted to say thanks for finding that saving.
Well, I mean, I'm sure we have plans right now. But I also want to, you know, acknowledge Conner Robertson's, this was their voluntary offer to provide us a discount on their fee to help participate. So.
So we'll put it in with all the other projects, and we'll, we'll, we'll be needing it. We'll need it, or we'll have it at the end for savings, the end of the, all of the projects.
I, I do want to, as Jared and the team are here, I do want to say thank you. I have been thoroughly impressed from day one with your team, the level, and attention to detail. But I think more than that, it's your intentionality to really gather everyone's kind of opinion, their needs, their wants, meshing that with kind of best practices, and coming up with something that has been truly spectacular. And I am just deeply, deeply thankful and feel honored to get to meet you guys, and then honored that you guys are, are a part of this. So thank you.
Okay, we will entertain a motion to accept the approval fee reduction of Conner Robertson Architects on selected projects. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedonia?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, eight I. This is approval proposal from Langerman Foster for Quality Assurance Services for Polished Concrete. Mr. Ochoa, did you have a question?
I did. So this is, how is this different from the other?
That's a great question, Mr. Ochoa. So the, the polished concrete is, as you know, something that we're using extensively in Waco ISD. It's a very durable surface, very attractive surface. And so Conner Robertson had brought to our attention back last summer that there was a way to place concrete now with some internal curing admixtures that reduce the use of cement and reduce water usage and reduce fly ash. All of those three things, well, cement and fly ash are extreme, are expensive, and they have to be imported many times from other places. So we're competing with world market on the price. By reducing that, we reduce the cost of the concrete. But another amazing benefit of this concrete is that it cures really quickly and really hard. So they're able to do the polishing when the concrete is quote-unquote "still green", and it gives a much better, an improved surface to that. More impermeable service, surface, and overall, just will perform better for the district. The other thing is, because it cures so fast, normal concrete takes at least twenty-eight days to reach its design strength, and this will do it in twenty-four hours. So it's game-changing for the construction industry because time is such a big part of cost in construction. So if we can reduce the time it takes for a contractor to put in, work in place, we're going to end up seeing the save, we're going to see the savings on the end of that eventually.
I have a question, please. What is, what is the impact on doing this new way on longevity of the, the flooring?
There's no negative impact to longevity of the material. I mean, it just, it's, it's more durable than, than the traditional.
It's not more breakable? I mean, it's, it's as good?
Yes.
As the old technique?
Yeah, this, this has been used all over the world and in the United States. It just hasn't been done in central Texas.
Okay. That's incredible. From twenty-four days, is that what you said? Twenty-eight days to twenty-four?
To twenty-four hours.
That's mind-boggling. Okay, here we go. Eight I approval. I will entertain a motion for the approval proposal from Langerman Forester for Quality Assurance Services for Polished Concrete. Whoa, who did that one first? We'll give it to Guillory this time. Angelo second. Okay, Mr. Grant, any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis, any discussion? Mr. Vedonia?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, didn't think that one was not going to pass. Very good. Okay. Moving on to item number nine, Waco ISD Fall 2023 Demographic Report. Mr. Templeton, looking forward to this report.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. King Cannon. It is my pleasure to be with you tonight. I will go over our fall report. I'll start by talking about the kind of economic conditions. We use the unemployment rates as a barometer of how the economy is doing. You can see the unemployment rate's been hovering right around that three-and-a-half percent, three-point-eight percent, which is, for the most part, means you're fully employed. We've got just about everybody working that really wants to be working. It's a little better now than it was a year ago in terms of turnover, transitioning of employees. So it has softened and settled a little bit. Texas is still doing very well compared to other states in terms of job growth in the regions and in population growth. But I will say the economic conditions are, I would describe them as cloudy because of the, the high interest rates, because of overall inflation is still relatively high. So there is still some hesitancy in the overall economy, which is having an impact on the housing market. So the housing market is, is kind of, it, it's a tale of two stories. It depends upon if you're a, where you are in the market, if you're a seller or a buyer. It is, it's transitioning because of these high interest rates. But for folks that are moving to the region because of a job change or a family change, when I say a family change, a marriage or having kids, that can drive decisions to buy houses. They still are needing to buy, but the challenge is the interest rates are high and the overall cost is still high. We've not seen much of a softening in the cost. We're starting to see signs because the inventory is starting to move up. There's, there's a little bit of an increase in the existing amount of homes for sale. So that will help with the softening of the overall pricing. Our economist with Zonda believes that the interest rates are going to stay in that six percent range, six to seven percent range through most of twenty-four. But when we get into the latter part of twenty-four, twenty-five, the interest rates could start to soften. We could start to see, as we did with the way up, we could see it on the way down with very minimal drops to where it could get into the five percent range in twenty-twenty-five. So again, overall, the conditions are, I would say, describe them as somewhat cloudy. This is a look at total home sales within Waco ISD. You can see that the number of listings is starting to go up. So total listings is up, the month supply of inventory is up, the pricing has not softened yet, but I do think it's going to soften. Year-over-year, sales has slowed. So we have seen a slowdown in sales. Again, it is tied to that rising interest rate because it is a little more problematic for younger buyers and for first-time home buyers. On the multifamily side, this is looking at multifamily data across the greater region. The blue bars represent the occupancy rates. The gold and the green are the effective and the market rent rates. You can see the occupancy rates have dropped down below ninety-one percent. These are some of the lowest occupancy rates that we've seen in many years. We've seen the additional units, so we've seen construction, and we're still seeing some infill construction and some construction taking place. The developers have not stopped despite the rising interest rates or these conditions. And we're seeing projects going on in Waco. Some of these are smaller, some of them are a little bit bigger. I'll touch on those projects. But the developers have not, not slowed down yet. Some of the highlights, this is the lakes at University Parks. It's about a hundred and sixty total lots, fifteen homes under construction. They've got about seventy-five vacant developed lots. This is Stylecraft Builder, a little bit more on the affordable side. I'd say those homes are probably closer to two-hundred thousand than they are a hundred and fifty thousand and, and above.
Three to four.
Three to four, yes. And it's, it's crazy to think of that three is, is become kind of entry-level price point for housing in some, in a lot of areas. This is the Infill Spot, which is the Renaissance at Sanger Heights, twenty-seven future lot. The preliminary plat was approved in September. They're in the very early stages of the ground clearing. I would say this is probably two years out or more before you really start to see those homes. Again, it's not going to have a huge number of, of students, but it is, the type of development that we will see in Waco is kind of that infill redevelopment type stuff. Next is the Floyd Casey Village, bigger project, two-hundred-and-forty future single-family lots. There is a small amount of multifamily, about sixty multifamily units. The final plat was approved in March of twenty-three. There is the initial clearing underway that was as of August. You can see the satellite image. Again, I think this is going to have a pretty long runway before it really, it's, it's going to be a while before we see two-hundred-and-forty occupied homes in this area. So it's not something that we're rushing to put impact of kids in here because of wanting to see how it's going to progress and see ultimately when they get the lots delivered, the price points of homes, those kinds of factors. On the multifamily side, we're tracking several multifamily projects. The purple shaded areas are the multifamily that are under construction. The kind of forest green, dark green shaded areas are the future planned, they're planned multifamily. We've got about one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five multifamily units that are under construction right now. There's about nineteen-hundred-and-fifty multifamily units that are in the planning stages. And some of those that are under construction right now, there's three-hundred-and-thirty that are for student or senior living that will not have an impact on school enrollment. You can see a majority of these are in the southern part, southern-eastern part of the school district. I'll touch on some of these highlights. The Creek View Apartments, it's down by that Topgolf behind the movie theater back in there. Three hundred multifamily units under construction. The construction went vertical a year ago, October of twenty-two, should be finishing up this spring. So we'll start to see residents moving in the Creek View Apartments this spring. And then we've got the Cottonwood Creek Multifamily Project, which is about four-hundred multifamily units. It is mixed-use, so there will be some retail commercial mixed in with the multifamily there. Next, we're looking at the Wayfair Apartments. It's two-hundred-and-seventy-two multifamily units under construction. It's a part of a large mixed-use development that does include office and some commercial space. The groundwork is underway. It started in September. You can see the, from the satellite image from September, those pad sites for the multifamily. This is an interesting one that we just kind of got previewed to a couple of weeks ago. It's the Creekside Community Village. It's kind of a new type, new product. It's three-hundred-and-forty-six future units. It's located at three-thousand-eight-hundred-ten South University Park Drive. It's got a mix of, of some very small units that are very small, and there's some that are a little larger, two, two bedrooms and up. It's about a ten-million-dollar project. I'd say the groundwork could begin in February twenty-twenty-four. You can see the breakdown of the housing types. There's about fifty that are those park homes, a hundred-and-twenty-two partially plumbed, which our understanding is it's a sink and a toilet, but not fully plumbed out like you would see in a normal housing unit. There's bungalow homes, micro homes, a total of about three-hundred-and-forty-six. It would have a low yield. I, I don't know that it will see a significant number of students at all. May not see any students. So it's a different product. It's a different type of housing, but it's one we just wanted to show you so that you would be aware of this project as it breaks ground and as it gets going. Now, we use the birthrate data to help us with the projections. Birthrates have been dropping for many years. So this is not a new trend, but you can see the impacts that it's having. We recorded the birthrate data going all the way back to two thousand and six, and then we compare it to the lagging kindergarten class five years later. So we can see a ratio of births to kindergarten. And you can see that ratio has been as high as in the point eight to point, almost point nine range, and then the ratio over time has gone down. Now, we've seen a dropping ratio in just about all of our clients. It is the increase in charters, it's the increase in homeschool, there are a variety of factors that are causing the, the ratio of births to kindergarten to, to move down. This is happening, as I mentioned, it's not a Waco ISD issue, it is a statewide issue. We work with about eighty school districts in Texas, and literally everyone has seen a drop in the share, the ratio share. It is something that has the potential to even drop more because of legislation issues, the, the governor's determination to advance the vouchers and advance choice. So we're definitely, something that we're watching very closely because it does, can have an impact down the road. But you can see, over the last five years, that ratio has been between point six-seven and point seven-one. So when we did the forecast, we stayed in that range of using between point six-nine, point six-seven, and you'll notice it got to about point seven-one. So we're using kind of a general range to what we've seen in the last four years. With that, with the combination of growth from some of the housing, overall, the enrollment is still declining slightly. So this fall's enrollment was thirteen thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four, and we think you could settle into about thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-ish in that five-to-six-year range. The yellow cell is indicating the largest grade per year. The green cell is the second-largest grade per year. And you can see this year's third-grade class is a little bit of a bubble. So it's been the largest, second-largest class for the last three years. So then, when that class moves on out of the elementary grade levels, you can see the elementaries are still likely going to drop in enrollment over the next few years. Here's a look at the projections by campus. We're starting with the elementary campuses. This fall's enrollment at the elementary schools was at seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three. You can see it's likely going to bottom out in about five years, five to six years, when it gets to about six thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three in the twenty-nine-thirty school year. It potentially could climb back up just a little bit as that large bubble works its way through. And it's also going to truly be dependent upon what happens with the kindergarten classes going forward. At the secondary level, I know the, the, there's, there's facility plans in place that will have an impact on the capacities down the road, but you can see Tennyson Middle School is your largest middle school right now. It's currently at about nine-hundred-and-fifty, then it's going to drop down below nine-hundred in about three years. At the high school levels, you can see University High School is going to stay at about almost seventeen hundred students next year, and then it's going to float down to about fifteen, just a little bit under sixteen hundred in five years. Waco High, on the other hand, is showing some potential that it's going to grow slightly and could get to about nineteen hundred students in three years and then kind of settle in that nineteen to eighteen hundred range. I'll do key takeaways and be ready to go back and answer any questions. Overall, the Waco area does continue to see job growth, and we're seeing relatively low unemployment rates. So I would describe the economic conditions overall as fairly good. Rising interest rates are causing some headwinds for the housing market, so that's one area we're going to watch very closely. It's not a, it's not a huge impact on your enrollment, other than it can cause some, some, when we don't have as much homes turning over, so your older homes don't tend to turn over as much when the interest rates are high because they, they likely have very low interest rates. They took advantage of the interest rates from two years ago, so therefore, they're staying put while the interest rates are high. The district's enrollment, we think, could stay near about thirteen thousand, six-hundred students for next couple of years, then could drop down to about thirteen thousand, two-hundred students in about a five-to-six-year period. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And Mr. Guillory?
And so I didn't see, you talked about birth rate and things. Did you ever, did y'all factor in like median incomes and cost of living and things like that?
Well, I can't, no, we do not factor that in, into our growth model.
And Dr. King Cannon, this question for you. I think you, I think you answered it before. I see like Creek View, Floyd Casey, Cottonwood, all that areas over there where Kendrick... I see like Creekview, Floyd Casey, Cottonwood, all that areas over there where Kendrick Elementary is and Alta Vista is, and I believe we're about to back off of Alta Vista. What point do you, do we think about another campus in the future if that area continues to grow like that?
Yeah, it depends on how many, let me put my mic on here. It depends on how many students we're growing overall in the district and the district total capacity. So if you look at his, I forget which slide, he shows the total capacity of all of our buildings and how many kids we can hold. Because what you do is if you have capacity, you typically redraw attendance boundaries instead of adding buildings. The one I think, I don't know if you mentioned it, that I think is the one to watch, is it 12th Street? Yes, yes, back there. And that's a South Waco area. And that's the one that we heard about from the city. And I don't know if you had that one in here, Bob, but it has a number of lots. Of course, it's a ways out. But we did mention to the city manager that we would like to have some property there. So should we need a future, so should we need a future elementary school? We would have it in that area because it was a large number. But you typically look at your total available space amongst all of your buildings. And I want to point out on the page that has the elementary campuses with the fall enrollment, I would like the board to see the number of campuses that we have that are below 400 students. And so those are worrisome to me. It's, they're, you know, it's inefficient to operate a building with too few of students. Then there's some other challenges and, and you could probably speak to this better than I could, Bob. But there are districts all over the state with declining enrollment that are facing consolidations, school closures. So you want to be careful not to overbuild, you know. So we have to really follow the numbers and those yields, how many students per household that are, you know, that are historic, those historical trends for Waco ISD. And so that's why these reports are really important because Bob's the expert in demographic projections. And my experience has been that they're pretty close on usually. And so you just want to be cautious and look at the big picture of all of your space in your district. And you can always redraw those attendance boundaries. And we will have to redraw attendance boundaries next fall for the open, when we close Kendrick. So our plan is to start next November with a committee, a citizens committee, and then get them started before the holidays, come back and finish after Christmas, and then bring the board new attendance boundaries hopefully by spring break of '25. Then that gives us the rest of the school year to communicate those out to families and get people ready to make their changes for the fall when their new school's open.
Dr. King, looking at this, so West Avenue is, this year is 275.
Yes, sir.
That's our smallest school.
It's very small.
It's one of our newer, newer schools. And then I'm looking at Mountain View, and it's projected back in 2027 on, from 2027 on, to be roughly the same size, 290, 276, 272.
So I think, you know, we're taking Alta Vista offline with this bond program. So if you look at the bottom of that page, your elementary totals. So you see your capacity there is 9,940 students. Now, that doesn't take into account that Kendrick is growing. So you're, you're growing Kendrick, but you're taking Alta Vista offline, that capacity of 580. But you're still have plenty of capacity in the district. So we're going to want to watch elementary very carefully as these new housing divisions come online, subdivisions, or what's the better word? Not all subdivisions, but just properties. But we're only going to want to watch that very carefully, especially as we approach a next bond program so that we can really work on having better efficiency of our elementary schools. And we may want to consolidate some elementary schools to be, just so we can do, pay for them. Quite frankly, you guys know we have budget deficit. So it's tricky, and it's going to take some strategy to figure all of this out. And so Alta Vista is a, closing Alta Vista is a first step in becoming more efficient and not just overall, but efficient in a single campus. And there's some accountability advantages to that as well.
Also want to just, you know, I guess, make known my viewpoint. I wholeheartedly support our magnet system that we have and understand that Hillcrest is a smaller school, not as small as some of these others. And Lake Air, I guess, for the number of students that they serve is probably considered a smaller school. But those magnet systems have been tremendously successful since been, being put in place. And as we go forward, I would really like for that to be remembered as we start looking at consolidations or movement of students. My last question, and forgive me, with Alta Vista, where do we anticipate? With the closing of Alta Vista, where do we anticipate those students going?
So we've always anticipated those students going to either Kendrick or South Waco Elementary. So that was part of the plan with the 2021 bond program. Now, we'll draw attendance boundaries with the committee, like I said, next fall. And so we'll take a look at the whole district and see what makes sense. I think we need to look at middle school as well and feeder patterns for elementary, middle, and high school. So we have our work cut out for us on that.
The new Kendrick is, what's the student capacity? I should know that.
780? No, what's the number, Jared? 750, thank you. 750 students.
So that will absorb some of those students, but not all?
750, between South Waco and, and Ken, yes, South Waco is getting expanded, and Kendrick is getting expanded. It will cover the attendance zones for those areas. And then remember, we have the ability to change other attendance boundaries when we're, and tweak as we're doing that. But I want to be clear, we're not ready to make any decisions about consolidating any other schools at this point. We're really just, our goal right now is to watch these numbers, finish this bond program, and then we'll begin to work on the next strategy as we're, as we're, as we're ready to do so. We're not ready to do that at this point, but I think it's significant to note the number of schools that we have that are below 400 at the elementary level because it's not efficient. And as we have a budget deficit and, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. We had the opportunity to get some funding from the state, and we didn't. Governor didn't help us with that in our special sessions. So, you know, we'll just wait and see.
I think one thing that's also important to remember is development is fun and it's great. And there's lots of new units, whether it's single-family or multifamily, happening within, within our district. But the reality is we don't have that many people moving into the heart of Waco. What a lot of it will be is people moving out of older places into newer places and us finding a lot more vacant homes on the market in Waco. I showed a couple, 48 homes over a three-week period this semester. And more than half of them, 25 of the 48 were vacant. So people are selling houses that they're not living in and having a really hard time selling them. So just because we're building X number of homes doesn't mean that, one, they're going to come from out of the district. Majority of the time, they will just move within the district into hopefully a better, more secure, more efficient home. So the key is how do we help draw the students back from these charter schools? That's, that's where the depletion is, to me. And if we can find a way to shine a light on why the difference is so significant, then that, to me, will be the biggest answer to some of these problems.
Do you have a state, I'm sorry? Get the interest rates down?
Interest rates will help, for sure.
And you might have a statewide perspective on school closures right now, but we're hearing stories about San Antonio ISD, Fort Worth, all over the state.
Yes, we're working with probably six different school districts. And in total, we're probably looking at, we're trying to probably help school districts close. And we're between 12 to 20 schools. And, you know, Spring Branch is in Houston. We're working with them. They're looking to close two to three. And it's mostly elementaries, you know, because that's where they're seeing the small numbers. And they're seeing, you know, those are bigger pieces, or you have more pieces of the puzzle when you're working with elementaries. So you've got some opportunities to, you know, move a little here, move a little there. Whereas when you're looking at middle schools or such big geographies, the attendance zones are so big. It's a little more challenging. So most of our clients are focusing on trying to get to an efficient point. And I'd say for most of them, the minimal, the minimum number they're looking at is 550, trying to get in that 550 to 850 range. Because it's about the number of sections per grade level. It's about what makes sense then to have the support staff. Because you've got, for a small elementary, you still have X number of, you know, food service and, you know, custodial staff and the support staff, whether it's a small or big. So therefore, you really can save a lot of money by getting to those efficient enrollments.
You said 550 to 800?
That's where the target they're kind of trying to get to.
Look at the number we have in fall 2023, in that target.
Exactly. But we have, with our new Kendrick, we'll be in a good range for that. And 750, in my experience, is very manageable.
Now, a lot of them, like, well, like Spring Branch, they're trying to combine it with some facility rebuilds. So they're, they're doing some rebuilds to help with that of not just moving them to currently old campuses, but no, they're going to have a transition plan to where they rebuild this campus here and then two go into that one, some strategies like that.
Also, I'd point out that we are in good shape with middle school, with taking Indian Spring off. And actually, Tennyson will be 1,060. I think the Caesar Chavez number might be closer to the 900 to 1,000. I think we have that 1,060 in the wrong spot there. So we'll double-check that. But we have plenty of capacity still at middle school, even with taking Indian Spring off. And so that, that's definitely going to help us with some efficiencies.
That will give us some wiggle room.
And we have room, mhm, and we have room.
Well, if you think of additional questions, don't hesitate to send them to Dr. King. Yes, sir.
Oh, I want to thank you for your work on this. I know you're the expert, but I really want you to be wrong on it.
Well, I can tell you things that I've seen districts do to prove me wrong. And one of the things is they, they go all in on getting creative with magnets and with choices, choice options, and with marketing. And so sometimes you got to toot your own horn. You got to let people know the difference between charters and the public school. It's not what they think. But we've got to tell that story and show them that the ratings of these charters is many, many times not as good as the ratings of the public school. But there's this false narrative out there that thinks that the charter is a better option. Well, it's not. In most cases, it is not. So school districts are now having to kind of become more about telling their own story and getting that message out there because it is a competitive world now. It's not, it's not like it was 15 years ago where it's not only competitive with charters, in many cases, it's now becoming competitive with even surrounding school districts. And then the homeschool situation is, is an emerging trend that is going to stick. It has stickiness behind it because there's more and more money that's being poured into homeschool curriculum and homeschool support programs and technology. And the homeschool is not just about an ideology. It is also about flexibility. That's probably the thing that's causing the homeschool group to grow the fastest is these are young families that want that flexibility to take a fall break in October and a spring break and a three-week Christmas break. And so they have these ideas about how they want to have school, and they may change their school week from week to week. And so that flexibility is a key thing for the certain demographics. But then as the kids age, I think we'll see that group come back to public school in large numbers because of fine arts and athletics and all those things that aren't as easy to do in that homeschool environment. You can do that at the young grade levels because it's not dependent upon a peer group of volleyball players or, you know, those other things.
When I was developing ads in my undergrad, you know, you did as good of a job of telling your own story as you could, and you never brought up the name of the competitor. You never saw ads for Coke that mentioned Pepsi. You talked about how good Coke was. And now you think about the cellphone ads. It is a side-by-side comparison that I think is the story that we have to tell with charter schools. Because when you put them side by side, there's not a, it's not hard to digest the realities of them. But if you just keep saying how good you are, it's easy for them to say, awesome, we're, we're great too. And so I think that's where, we're not going to mess. Homeschool is not really competition for us because of all those things. I think for us, it's the charter school. And if, if we can find a narrative that says this is X and this is Y, which one would you rather have your kids study in? And, and the results are clear, you know. And that's why I hunger for us to take that on. Because that, to me, will turn these numbers all around if we can do it effectively.
Question for Doc. Right here, from ninth grade to 10th grade, do we know what's?
Why the numbers, yes, your ninth graders are.
That is also a common issue that happens at virtually all high schools. It's a credit issue. They don't quite get enough credits to become sophomores, so they pin up there a little bit. But we do, we literally see that at just about all high schools. That, I have one exception to that. There's only one that I can point to clearly that doesn't meet that trend. It's the Hurst Ulyss Bedford School District, HUB, in the, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And the reason that is because those ninth graders are not at the high school. They're at, they're at middle school. They have the junior high, the old. They have stuck with the seven, eight, nine.
The old model.
The old model. And those ninth graders, they don't pin up there. They, they want real badly to get to.
But that has its own set of challenges too with being able to participate.
That's the only one that I've seen that doesn't have that ninth to 10th drop. Now, the 12th drop is mostly early graduates that graduate early. So that's the reason the numbers trail off at 12th is, is early graduations.
We've had a lot of talks about ninth graders as we're working with our Brazos Committee and planning for next year. And that's, that's the, where we get clogged up, right? So we've got to do a better job with ninth graders and helping them get their credits so they don't get behind.
Bob, do you all, you all track sort of a year-over-year accuracy rate on your projections?
We do. It's slipped over the last three years. Because of the pandemic, you know, we had a, we had a never-seen event that definitely caused. And then the following year, it bounced back. And so then there was that. We tend to be within 1% to 2% on a one-year period. So next year's number should be within 1%. Over time, when you get out five years, if you look at that five-year numbers, there's probably about a 3% to 5% range on that five-year number. So, but we do tend to stay within, I'd say, a vast majority of our clients were within 1% in that next year. And then it can float a little bit to 2% to 3%, and it's, it's pretty good.
That's your standard error measurement?
Uh huh.
I've seen him nail it before.
We have gotten any that are very close. The thing that's happening now is this choice factor is, is edging away at the younger grade levels. So it's the younger grade levels that, quite honestly, are the more challenging ones to hit now. And that didn't used to be the case. But now it's that kindergarten number that I, it's the first number. When, when I get an enrollment report to see, to want to measure how we did, I always start with kindergarten because that has such an important impact going forward. So you can see I've still got that kindergarten number dropping down. Well, if next year's number were to be 1,000 or more, then that's really good news. And then that means the next, the following year's first grade class is likely going to be bigger. And so it kind of compounds over time.
Are the populations for our charter schools published?
Yes, they're available through TEA. They get a little challenging to measure up apples to apples because like, as an example, Harmony may be reporting into one location, but there may be like five or six campuses that are going into that TEA number. But yes, the charter data is available on the TEA website.
As well as performance data?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And that's where you can really start to see the differences. Always a pleasure. If you think of questions, don't hesitate to send them to Dr. Kinkanen. And I look forward to staying in, involved. Yes.
Well, thank you so much for, this is always good information and a great kind of long-range view of our district. So I appreciate you taking time and doing this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number ten. Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Guaranteed Maximum Price. Number two, South Waco Elementary, Mrs. Barera.
Well, good evening again, Madam President, Dr. Kinkanen, members of the board. So on behalf of the project team and Waco ISD administration, very happy to share with you that our South Waco project has been under budget. Um, there are, there are representatives from Masonic Construction here. I'm sorry.
Sorry. None of those underwater piers, the cement that we need to?
Not yet. Yeah, we don't know about those yet. No.
Just your mouth.
There are representatives from Masonic Construction, John, Jonathan Kazanas. Um, he is the project manager and is on site at South Waco, and they're making good progress there already. Um, and also, of course, O'Connell Robertson. You may recall at our August board meeting that you approved a revised budget for South Waco. And one of the reasons was that, for that, was that we had an increased scope of work, and we also had some unforeseen construction cost escalation. So we provided for that. Um, it took, it took those items into account. But through the diligence of O'Connell Robertson and Masonic Construction, we sit where we do today, which is with, um, under budget, and in a position to be able to accept some very much needed alternates for the South Waco project. So, um, the GMP two does include the, um, the gymnasium, which was a very painful thing to consider as an alternate, but it's not anymore. I mean, so it is actually, you're actually seeing it as alternate one, but it's incorporated into the GMP one, uh, GMP two cost. So the other alternates that we asked for was the kitchen remodel. The kitchen is in desperate need of remodel. And so we're very pleased to be able to, uh, work on that with Masonic. And our, our strategy is to be able to offset the cost of the kitchen equipment using some other funds. So I'll be working with Ms. Davis and Mr. Reese on, on that. Um, the rooftop unit replacement is something that was also direly needed. But, you know, where are we gonna get the money? So now we get to do that. Um, and then the other things, the interior quarter, quarter finish, and the new cabinets in the renovated area, were really nice to have things that are gonna make it feel like a new school, but we weren't sure we could afford it. Well, now we can. And then the parking lot addition, which puts a parking lot right in front of the new building. If you remember, during the design phase, we sort of had to move things around, and we shifted the administration from one side of the building to the other. When we did that, we discovered there wasn't a parking lot in front of that, so it would look kind of like funny. So we wanted to provide parking for people that are visiting the school, right in front of the school, it's easy to get in. So these are, these are alternates are really, um, are gonna make the South Waco project just really extraordinary. So, um, we have attached the GMP number two and executive summary, and recommend approval of GMP number two.
May I ask a question?
Uh, yeah, let's get it in motion, so I'll, and then we can go through and ask discussion. So I will entertain a motion to consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding guaranteed maximum price number two for South Waco Elementary. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Mr. Grant, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Um, Mr. Patton, we'll start with you with discussion.
Have you been in, uh, conversation with administration at South Waco about the parking lot being in front of the building?
Yes.
Is that what they want?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually helps with their traffic problem there, too. So if you might have also remembered, we talked about a deceleration lane on Gurley. But by providing this parking lot there, we're helping get cars off of Gurley, because we can use it for stacking as well.
That was my question. I just know that in the past, having that parking lot in the front, they were having, um, while they were trying to do the traffic patterns, parents were getting out and walking in front, and there was, um, congestion there. As long as it, that their administration is wanting that, then good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Mr. Ochoa, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Gilery?
No.
Uh, Mr. Vedani, any discussion? Mr. Davis? Uh, Mr. Grant?
Does Esser have a sister?
Where's Esser? Esser number two, and we need it.
Man, we, yeah. I'm thrilled. I just want to say I'm thrilled that these things that didn't seem like they should be alternates are no longer alternates. I mean, it, it just kind of gutted me to think that, um, doing so much for a school and they couldn't have an, a gymnasium compared to what they currently have. I mean, it, so thank you, Masonic and everybody that has worked, because, um, man, that's fantastic news. Thank you.
I, I agree. I'm, I'm thrilled that it's under budget and we can get these items taken care of. I think South Waco not having a gym, new gym felt, I mean, their, their gym right now is pretty bad. So I, I'm thrilled that this is, this is going through.
So we're still working on the cafeteria, though, right? That's not a done deal.
Oh, it is. It is.
So all, every thing that you mentioned is no longer on the alternate?
All of those things we mentioned are included in GMP two.
When we all vote for it. So on that.
I'm making sure what we're voting on.
On that, I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. So now, yes, everything is included. Thank you.
We're looking forward to, to seeing John a lot more.
Okay, moving on to item number eleven. Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Guaranteed Maximum Price. Number two for Kendrick Elementary, Mrs. Barera.
Okay, well, I have, I have more good news. So Kendrick's also under budget.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, right. Um, and there's, there are representatives here from Built Right Construction Education Group, EWC, and, and also, of course, O'Connell Robertson. Um, like we just discussed at South Waco, the project budget was adjusted also at Kendrick to reflect increases in project scope and construction, construction cost escalation. Because Kendrick came, came under, under budget, one point four million, were able to accept the much-needed alternates at South Waco Elementary School. So, um, from the beginning, we've approached these projects and the whole program as a whole, that we have to deliver all of them. And so now, we, we are able to deliver all of them for what they need. At this time, we've not recommended accepting any alternates on Kendrick. There are a couple of alternates, but we believe as we move forward that we'll be able to pay those out of project contingency, which, you know, would come back to you for approval eventually, but it would not increase the GMP. So we'll continue to working, work on those and refine them and, and get them to where we can afford to do them. And, um, we want to ready to get started at Kendrick. So GMP number two summary is attached, and we recommend the approval as presented.
Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion to consider discuss, take appropriate action regarding the GMP number two for Kendrick Elementary School.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Um, we're gonna start with Mr. Patton again. Mr. Patton, is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Ochoa? Uh, Mr. Gilery?
No.
Uh, Mr. Vedania? Uh, Mr. Davis? And Mr. Grant?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes, I was, I was, yeah. I just wanted to take some time real quick to, um, thank Built Right Construction for your donation for Kendrick Elementary. Just, I think, over the course of five years, um, just to the students there, it is just above and beyond. And we, I am, um, gosh, I'm, I'm at a loss for words for what the right word is that captures it, but just so thankful, um, for your participation, not only in building these schools, but also our students. And so just really thank you for, really, really appreciate it. I know those families and the students are gonna really appreciate it. And it is truly, truly an honor, um, to work with you guys. So thank you. Okay.
Yeah, that's the kind of generosity you want to see in print, right? Thank you, Tom, Mr. Wright, um, and Bill Wright. It's just a, it's so refreshing to see generosity of our community, helping Waco ISD kids. And, and that is very impactful.
Yeah. So, thank you. Uh, let's see, moving on to item number twelve, review, discuss Waco ISD multi-tiered system of approach. Dr. Warren.
Good evening.
And Ms. Freeman, sorry about that. I didn't know if you were coming up or not.
My role is relatively brief, because what I'm really doing is reintroducing you to one of our own, who has recently taken on a new role for the district as Director of Multi-Tier Systems of Support for Behavior. Um, from time to time, we've come in front of you to give you updates on the kinds of things that we're doing to ensure that all of our students have a safe learning environment, and that our staff members are well-equipped with the skills and the strategies needed to maintain that safe learning environment. The biggest development that we have this year is in the form of people. Um, so we have hired three subject matter experts who are really guiding the work this year, and Ms. Freeman is going to take you through our update.
Like she said, I'm Chrissy Freeman, uh, Director of MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Um, as I was preparing to come before you all this evening, I was like, how can I tell you this in the short amount of time? Because if you can get me talking about behavior, I can spend hours and days, and, and I can just go on forever. Um, but I think probably the most important thing that I could probably tell you about our team, since it has come into inception since July first, um, is that we are just being really intentional. Um, intentional in how behavior is viewed in our district, um, intentional in how we're supporting campus staff, um, and students, and what we're doing and the work we're doing, and that we really have just been intentional of just trying to figure out what everyone's understanding was of behavior. Because it's really easy to talk about discipline data. But behavior isn't just the negative, right? It's how are we proactively getting ahead of behavior and seeing, um, all students, and what are we offering to all students within our systems? Um, we operate under the tiers. I mean, that has been something that has been, you know, given over, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here. But really, in part of our intentionality within our tiers, is what are we offering for all students at that tier-one level? Um, and what, and then what happens at tier-two that doesn't, um, look like or sound like we're doing something different or overwhelming the system at tier-two and tier-three? Um, what, what I will say that we, is kind of important to understand about the behavior tiered system, is that when you don't have a strong tier-one system, just like in reading and math, it will overwhelm your system. And so when a lot of, we've had a lot of questions about, well, why didn't we start with tier-three? Because we know that there are challenging behaviors that are occurring. And what I will kind of say to you is, we're doing this work, and we're redefining that tier-one system of support, and really getting intentional pieces into the, and I'll kind of go through what those pieces look like here in a minute. But when we're looking at that tier-one, and we get those systems in place, all of a sudden, that tier-three, they don't really look like tier-three, and they're more at a tier-two or a tier-one level. Um, and so, you know, we've talked a lot about alignment of systems, and I think I need just to reiterate that, when we're aligning our systems, it is for the benefit of our students and our staff. Because our students are who are moving either from campus to campus, or they go from elementary to middle school, we're speaking the same language, we're doing the same practices. It's not like they have to start over in the intervention process, because they move from one campus to another, or one grade level to another. I know some of you may have heard about the tray, and this is where our work with Emergentree comes into play. And I think it's important for me to say that we are not doing Emergentree. We partner with Emergentree because they provide the framework that, just like, um, when we're teaching reading and math, we have a curriculum, we have a scope and sequence. Um, surprise, surprise, there's not like a curriculum or scope and sequence for behavior. So we have to derive that and what that looks like for our students and our campuses in Waco ISD. Um, so within this tiered framework system, we, um, you know, have, this is where, what has driven our professional development, our coaching for our campuses, and, um, the intentional conversations that we're having about behavior and what it looks like in our campus and our district. This is just kind of giving you an idea of like what we're looking at in each area of the tray, or when we're building that scope and sequence for behavior. And we, we do have certain aspects of the tray, or certain sections of the tray, that have intentional activities within them. But we also have campuses, and we honor that autonomy of the campus, that they say, well, we like to do this this way, our connection routines. Or we have our acknowledgement systems. And we say, great, as long as it fits within this definition and this framework, we're, we're, we're rolling with it, and we're supporting them with it. Here's what our timeline has looked like. Um, and I think probably the biggest piece of the puzzle that we had was establishing those tier-one tier, um, teams at the, in the summer. Every campus has a tier-one team. Um, they, and what makes up the team is really important, I think. Because a lot of times, when you think about campus decision-making teams, you usually go straight to the administrator and administrator only. The direction that we give is that we're training, yes, there's an administrator over that team, but you also have teacher leaders. We also invite them to make that team up of not only veteran teachers, but novice teachers, because they have a voice on the campus of, you know, what makes sense. And I, and I can give an example. We were sitting in one of our coaching sessions, and there was one of the novice teachers that was sitting there, and she was listening, and she wasn't saying a lot. And the veteran teacher says, well, we've always done it, or this is how we do it. And the, the novice teacher speaks up and says, well, I didn't know. That wasn't something that was necessarily trained for us. And so that was pretty eye-opening, that we needed to make sure that we had those sustainable systems, that it didn't matter, and it wasn't hinging on one person or one idea, that when you have staff turnover, that you can just pick the systems up and, um, do the planning. So just looking at this timeline of support, I wanted you to see that there is a, there is a, um, intentional process that we're following. And so it kind of started, that behavior boot camp, which I've been the privilege of doing the last two years, and what that looks like is, um, May Kaufman with Emergentree came in, and she did kind of that cultivating classroom management plan. So every teacher left with a classroom management plan. Then I got to spend the next two days working on how are we viewing behavior? How are we responding to behavior versus reacting behavior in that adult mindset of behavior? Then we did work, intentional work with those tier-one teams, um, in day one, where we focused on just certain sections of the tray. We were looking to not overwhelm our campuses with a lot of, whole lot of new information. We wanted to give them the information, let them digest it, create a plan of action and what they were gonna do. And then we came back and had individual campus coaching visits with each campus that participated in the training. And what those coaching visits looked like, and we'll kind of talk a little bit about that, is, okay, you created that plan, you created that professional development plan for your campus from what we did in day one, and then how did it go? How's it working? What are you seeing? How's, you know, what can we do to help? Um, and I will say overwhelmingly, the campuses, at first, we did have some that were not, they were pretty skeptical. They're like, I don't see how this works. We want you to bring in someone else. Or they wanted me or my team to just come and do it for them. But that's not how we create sustainability. I can't, I can't do it all. Like, Chrissy Freeman can't come in with the Avenger cape, right, and go dun-da-da-dun. Like, we are really trying to train and create content knowledge about behavior within those that are on the campus, because they're the ones that are eating, sleeping, breathing it daily. Um, we've addressed tier-two in the same way with training with the tier-two teams that are made up pretty much of the same thing of what we have within our tier-one teams, except for at the tier-two levels where you add in that campus support role, kind of comes in and folds it. They're, they can be a part of tier-one, but they're really taking the lead of that tier-two. Um, we are having district team meetings, and then we're also doing intentional coaching with the instructional specialist and teacher, um, master coaches on the campus. And so I give you this information to kind of tell you, this is what we've done this semester. I will also kind of add in here that it was something that we did just as our department, that we had quite a few teachers who were on-boarded after we offered the original behavior boot camp. And so we kind of offered a mini version, a hybrid version, where they had to do some, um, online webinar work, um, on their own, and then they came back with us for a day. We created that classroom, um, planning document. We did that in November. We did that in November because we had campus administrators and teachers were saying, hey, my friends went to this new teacher boot camp, how can I get involved in that? And so, we're looking at expanding that model to any kind of new teachers that are onboarded, onboarded this, this spring semester, where we'll go out and do that same type of coaching for our teachers as well. And this is what our spring will look like. I think the biggest piece that's going to be different, we're going to continue the professional development, is we will do a program review at the end of the spring, where we're doing fidelity checks, gathering data, those kinds of things, to start planning for, and what are we going to be doing? How will we carry on this work? I could come up here today and say, oh, we're going to do it this way in the summer. But we are being, again, very intentional about what are our campuses need? What are our teachers need? What do we need to address behavior in those systems? This is the phases of implementation, kind of guiding document that we're utilizing during these coaching visits. And I, I kind of shared this information with you because it is this, you know, systematic change is going to, it's, it's not going to happen overnight. It's not some kind of magic wand. They, you know, they're out of magic wands at Target, you know? Like, I can't just wave a magic wand. But we are being very intentional again on the planning and the development of practices. I would say as a district as a whole, we are in that pilot phase. We have done our training, we're seeing application of practices that is taking that instructional approach to behavior. And so, that's, we're excited about that and the work that's happening. As far as our team goes directly with myself and Adam and Caroline, who are here with me tonight, you know, we are establishing expectations and implementation. But I think it's really important for me to say that if I'm training something, I'm going to make sure that, I have to know if it's working. And the only way that I know it's working is if I'm out on the campuses or we're out on the campuses. We're attending the tier-one and tier-two meetings with our campuses as they have them set up, providing that guidance, talking them through the systems. What does the data collection look like, those kinds of things? We're also providing coaching and modeling for our campus support staff because everything in behavior is driven off of a function. And, you know, that's, it's really, that's a whole other, like I said, I could talk about that for a long time. But, you know, we're providing that campus support, providing training for them as a group and a whole to get, to find out where that skill gap is for them and bring them up to speed on how to deliver intervention. Whereas, we're not just responding to behavior and it's not just relying on one person and how are they, they working with their staff and with their teachers? And then, again, just addressing those campus needs and gaps. That's all I got. Any questions? I did that really fast.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do any, and you may not know the answer to this. Do any of the transformation schools have access to this training or similar training?
They do have access and they are invited. Yes.
How's the attendance?
Are they using it?
It is spotty. I will say that we are working on that kind of personalized, individualized plan that probably I'm sure other departments are looking at too, is how to catch them up. I will also tell you that I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a plan and say, until I go out and I can see it, and now that I can go out and see it, we're going to be doing a lot of observations and then coming up with an individualized plan for them. Because, you know, we're hearing, we're hearing things and, but we will, you know, they will be getting the same type of, of training and support through our department and emergantry networks as well. Because we want them to be caught up to speed quickly, fast and in a hurry. Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Great job.
Thanks, Mr. Patton.
Question, what is the data showing on the implementation? District-wide and by campuses? Are we seeing positive trending data or are we seeing stagnations?
So, the funny thing about discipline data is if, if it's not being entered clearly in a certain place. So, we have really kind of had to streamline our processes of where do behavior incidents go? And where does behavior intervention data go? And that's been a big part of our training that we've been doing. And so, I can't really speak to that yet because then here's why I'm not ready to answer that. We just finished training in all of these intervention systems and what that should look like. So, it would be unfair for me to say, now I want to compare it if you never had, you had never had something available to you ahead of time.
So, would you have this data at the end of the school year?
I think I'll have a clearer picture from where we're starting at now. Like, I can say, I would, I would feel more comfortable telling you, this is the data that we pulled after we finished training and we've been through things at this time period. And then what does it look like at the end of the school year than I would be to say now? I think that would be unfair to ask our, our campuses to kind of comparing that, that number though.
One more question.
Sure.
Are you feeling pushback from, I don't want to say administrators, but from, from people on campus who are having issues with, with students? Are you feeling pushback on implementing this, this program, this way of doing things?
You mean like in that behavior is a communication of, in, in indicating of a skill gap?
Right.
I wouldn't call it pushback. I think that there was some skepticism that we were doing, like we were bringing in some new program. And then once it was kind of, we got in there, got in the weeds, started having conversations, started doing the training, it was like, okay, so we do have autonomy and we can still have our pride and our grit, but we're aligning it to these core values of safe, respectful, responsible and how we view behavior. It all interconnects. And then now that there has been implementation processes, if they call us and I say, well, where, what does your connection routine look like? Or what does your acknowledgement procedures look like? And they're like, well, oh, yeah, we probably need to go back and, you know, readdress that. So, I wouldn't really even say that it's a lot of pushback. No, I think it's, they're hungry for something and they want to do it better and they want to take the instructional approach to behavior. It's just, we are all ingrained in these repetitive patterns that we had. You know, we were on a ladder system or we got our color changed or, you know, something of what we were trained in, like that. The kids don't need to earn their way up a ladder for there to be intervention to, to happen, right? Like, that's the biggest shift that we're making, I think, is viewing, when do we start the intervention and what data points do we have to start the intervention?
Excellent.
Yeah.
I have a question.
That's Mr. Gilley and then Mr. Davis.
Ms. Freeman, where did you, where are you bringing this system from? Like, where have you used it and seen it work? And my second part to that question is, have you seen it work in inner-city urban district? And that's the second part.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Warren on that question. Because this was all established before I got to you.
Okay, I thought you were, you were bringing something in. Okay.
Now, the process itself or the system itself, multi-tiered systems of support, is a well-established, well-researched approach to looking at behavior really in the same way that you look at academics. From an instructional viewpoint, it works in all settings because it really causes you to look at your students and your conditions, your nuances, your unique conditions, and make sure that you are creating systems, strategies, approaches that are going to work for your folks.
So, that model, have you, have you viewed it in a setting? Like I was speaking of, like an inner-city setting to kind of duplicate success and bring it in? That's kind of what I was kind of looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. One of the things that we do as kind of background or context for the work that Chrissy and her team are doing is participate in a North Texas collective. As you all know, we tend to be more alike, our urban neighbors far away from Waco than we are to our geographical neighbors. And through our connection with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute, we've been able to participate in a collaborative effort with districts that are very much like us with the same kinds of students, families, concerns, challenges. And we are all doing the same kind of work.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I think my question is, you said earlier that we weren't doing emergantry, but then it seemed like we're doing a lot with it. So, I was just trying to get an understanding of what that meant. Because we're saying we're not doing emergantry, but we're using the model, we're using their consultants. So, I was just trying to see, what did that mean when we said that?
Emergantry is our, our external facilitator, if you will. So, the approach, multi-tiered systems of support is not a program. That is a way for us to organize what we do in terms of behavior and ensuring that our classrooms are safe for our students and our staff members. So, emergantry just happens to be the consultant that is helping us with the technical support as we get things rolling.
Okay, and then I think my next question is, what is really, what's the difference? It seems like we're hearing the same models, you know, like, because I see we're changing like how we're approaching, but we've had level-one interventions. You know, tier-one interventions have been in place. So, are we, are we just saying those were not effective? So, we're doing a different, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to, because I know Mr. Patton asked about data. You know, to say, hey, we're moving in the right direction or we're not. So, I'm just wondering, why would we be doing anything different if we don't have data to show that it wasn't working or it is working? I'm just wondering how we came to that conclusion if we don't know how it was working before.
It's actually a good thing that you're hearing some redundancy in terms of tiers and interventions because that emphasizes that this isn't dependent on a program. It really is about organization and it's about mindset. So, those interventions that we've had forever, those different things that we might do at the point that a student's behavior becomes disruptive or unsafe, those kinds of responses are not necessarily being changed or were seen as unworthy of continued use. What we do find, though, is that we have the same level of, the same patterns are still in place. And when you keep doing the same things over and over and over and you're not seeing any progress, something's got to give. And for us, it's really more about that organization, making sure that we are not dependent on individuals or particular program materials, but we really are thinking systemically. What is it overall that we need to have in place? What are our non-negotiables in terms of our expectations and our values? How do those then show up in our classrooms and our shared spaces? It's also getting our folks to really look at behavior, not in terms of something that you react to at the end, but it's something that you are paying attention to throughout the entire instructional situation. So, that's really what this is about, is allowing us to take all of those independent resources and put them within a intentionally designed framework that then allows folks to, to do what each student needs them to do.
And we're not, we're still adhering to our student code of conduct.
Absolutely.
This is more prior to a write-up, looking to stop the behavior before it starts. Correct?
Yes, that's correct. The discipline, we're trying to get intervention in place before we get to the point of needing to write a discipline intervention PMS action code that results in ISS OSS.
And no, no directives have come saying, a teacher can't write a kid up for misbehavior or you have one, one referral for a semester? None of those kind of things to alter data?
Right, so like, no. And if you look in the tray, like, there is a place for correction. And so, consequences and correction, that all comes as part of it. It just can't be your sole operating procedure guideline, which is kind of, when you take that discipline approach to mindset, it's like you have to go somewhere else or you have to earn your way back into the classroom environment.
And the teacher has lost their ability to lead.
Right.
That's what I would tell my teachers. When you do a referral to me, you have no more choice in what I choose to do with that student. I'm going to do the discipline as I see fit, based off your referral. You've given me that responsibility.
Right, and part of the work that we're really doing in this point, at this point too, is really kind of identifying what is that teacher-handled behaviors? What are the tools that you can have when you see this? And then what is that administrative, what, what, what they would have been sent to the principal for and what that looks like?
So, your, your training team, going back to that, are they doing walkthroughs in classrooms, looking, looking at how, how teachers? I'm just going to talk about this food tray. It's easy for me to look at. Are they going in and going, oh, this teacher I see is really working on connection? Going to the next and then giving feedback to the teacher? I mean, I'm sure it's going to the administrator. But are teachers getting that one-on-one feedback from your training committee teams?
So, the teachers that have been through, like new teacher boot camp, the mini-behavior boot camp, those are, that's who we have that connection with.
I thought you had a committee on each campus.
There is a tier-one team. Yes, the tier-one teams are going in, doing, yes. They are, yes, we are, we are getting to that point for them to be equipped and ready to be making those, those.
To do walkthroughs.
Yes.
Because I think that's where you're going to get your, your data.
Yes.
Outside of PMS and district code of conduct violations. But it seems like a very positive pre-intervention before Freeman has just ticked me off in class and I just can't take her interruptions anymore before I write her up and, and give her to a show at a handle.
Yes.
That, that the teachers are, are being equipped on other methods and the kids are being trained as well as the teachers.
Yes, and part of the resources that we have with working with the emergantry is there are like the fidelity checklist, the classroom fidelity checklist, those walkthrough guidelines. There's all of that comes into that as part of the package deal that you have, that it's all very much aligned to the tray. There is also a classroom management data collection tool that myself and my team can use when we go in and we're doing observations. So, when we're put in for that behavior consult piece, you know, it's not just us coming to walk. If, you know, if the campus puts in a behavior consultant and says, MTSS department, we need help with this student, we can take that tool and we're going in and doing observations in that classroom. And it is systematically looking at what is the acknowledgement to correction data? What does the skill building look like? What is that connection? So that when we're giving them feedback, it's, how do, you know, it's all encompassing into that classroom environment.
Are we dovetailing with LSSPs on this?
That, are you mean from the special education side?
Just from the school psychologists? Are we not dovetailing for, for that, that piece that you just described, the ratios?
On the special education side, if the student is in evaluation and things of that nature, yes, we partner with the special education department.
For like continued misbehavior, what I was referring to. My final question, I'm sorry to have talked so much. Are parents being educated on this?
That would come through what is being disseminated out through the campuses, but we do encourage for parent involvement and parent communication to occur, yes. That's what comes out of that campus team, as part of that campus team guidance.
One day.
No, no.
I'm just, I, I, this is one of my areas of expertise and I actually know.
Want to be on a team, I can get you on a team.
No, 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 I've done plenty of, I've done plenty of it.
Mr. Dave, yes, Mr. Davis has been waiting ever so patiently over here to ask.
I just wanted to know because, I mean, I worked in the district in behavior too and I think we were doing these things. And I think that's what's kind of scary to me because I'm not seeing, I see that we're putting the, we're shoring up the system so we can make sure these things are in there. But if we think it wasn't working, I'm not understanding, taking the same approach. So, that's, I think that, if I could, I think that's the, the understanding I'm lacking. If we're, because we had correction and acknowledgement, connections, being preventative, those are things that we've, I would think everybody should have been doing in behavior. So, if we weren't doing that, I think that's maybe what I need to hear, that we didn't have these things in place. But I feel like when I asked, we're saying we did have these things in place. We're doing more of the same. So, are we changing the way we're doing? Or what, what is the need for a new approach? That's what I'm saying. So, was it something that wasn't working before and why are we taking a new approach? That's what, that's what I'm trying to.
I'll zoom in on one of the words that you included in your statement just then, should. I'll zoom in on one of the words that you included in your statement just then, should, is what we were operating with. So there were resources, lots and lots and lots of resources, quite honestly. We've been very rich, very fortunate in our district about the numbers and variety of resources that we've been able to access, but they were not within an actual system. So the moment a person moved out of a particular position or moved to a different campus, or the next new shiny program came through a vendor, then things were changing. And so depending on where you were, and that could even be grade by grade within the same campus, things were different. And so it was very hard for our students and our staff members to understand, what are the expectations? What, what am I supposed to do? How am I supposed to really create a classroom environment that is going to support the success of all of my students? We also had some help at the district level in terms of additional professional learning opportunities and other resources and trainings. But again, this was really siloed, it was not part of an overall system. So what we've done for these last three years or so, three or four years, is really pay attention to what folks have been asking for and where they've identified gaps in looking for that kind of consistent, clear expectations and then help. So it's, it's great that we have words and that we've been talking about this and opening the doors in terms of knowing really what's happening, grade by grade or campus by campus. But we needed to have the people to come in and then provide that direct, just-in-time coaching support and help them process information before it gets to the crisis level. And so that's really what the, the new and different is for us. As we continue this process, there will be data. The expectation overall really is that this, this approach by looking at behavior in the same exact way that we look at academics as instructional, that we are going to see a significant reduction in our exclusionary discipline consequences. We'll have kids in class, we'll have them more engaged, and we will be able to integrate what right now is intentionally being spotlighted. This approach, this is exactly what our curriculum and instruction partners are doing and have been doing for a number of years. We're playing catch-up in terms of using that same framework. And so once we get everybody comfortable and it's been truly ingrained into our system, when you hear us talk about multi-tiered systems of support, you'll know that it's inclusive of academics and behavior.
That's true. And this is my last question, did I open it for anybody? So I know a piece of this is data informed, and you just said three, almost four years. So in this span, have we been able to show data that supports the work we're doing that's saying, yes, these changes that we are making are correlating to better data for, as far as regards to behavior, less behavior incidences, less fights, whatever, whatever the data points we, we're gauging our behavior system off of, are we showing, are we trending in the right direction? Because I see data informed, but I'm just wondering.
I think that's what she said would be this summer, right?
But I'm just saying, we said three, almost four years, so we don't have any data to show that it's trending in the right direction.
But you, the board routinely gets data, disciplinary data along particular codes and offenses and, and consequences. And the pattern that we saw in that with those numbers and then in talking with our staff members, is that we're not, things aren't changing, that our numbers are still high, our disproportionality in terms of who's being consequented and the loss of instructional time, the impact that then has on our academic progress, things are not changing. And so what, what needs to be different then? What is the gap that we can now fill? And what that is really, is stepping back from an emphasis on interventions at the point of crisis and really looking from the very beginning at communication. And how are we involving our students in creating these classrooms? How are we teaching our students, not just at the beginning of the year for an intense week or two, but throughout the year about, this is how we do school and this is how we figure it out when our emotions have us dysregulated or we are tempted to do something that might be disruptive or unsafe. So that's what we're looking at that, that's different. Part of the data that is represented on that tray too, are some new tools that our campuses are learning to use to help them better identify which students do need more or different. So beyond those expectations at the foundational level, there are students who definitely need more or different in order to meet our expectations. And we have some new tools that our campuses are learning to use and that's what Ms. Freeman is talking about as well. So we will have some data that will allow you to see kind of where we're starting and then as we move forward, the expectation is that the numbers that are routinely placed in front of the board will decrease.
Thank you, and I appreciate the, the layout of the system.
And I, and I will say too, like, part of that data informed, again, is not just the discipline data and part of what we're given is like, we never really had a track, because I worked in that same system that you did, we never had a way of tracking the fidelity of the implementation of the behavior interventions. There wasn't like a fidelity checklist of like saying, does it look like this? Do you have alignment? If you had multiple people on campuses who were delivering the same types of intervention, does it look the same, right? And so within this framework, there are the fidelity measures that we're going to be looking at as we're doing those program reviews. There's also, as part of the progress monitoring piece that we'll implement at that tier-two and tier-three level, where we can go back and see the fidelity of that implementation is given as the data is entered, that we never really had before.
I was thinking, you know, it's capacity building, so, and then it's, all of this is entangled in a multitude of variables such as teacher turnover, academics, how kids are doing, you know, I've heard some conversations that some of our kids are getting stronger academically and some of their behaviors are decreasing because they can do the classroom work. So it, it all works together and I, I know, I heard Dr. Cornblum say that these two departments are working together now on systems of instruction and systems of behavior together. And that's important, but it's, it's, it, it's hard work, it's complicated and has a lot of variables about it.
I love the movie Hoosiers. And in the movie, the same group of kids started off with doing the same things. They passed the ball to each other, they dribbled the ball, they shot the ball, and they weren't effective at all, you know? And they brought in a leader that taught them how to do those same things that they were already doing in ways that were efficient, that were wise, that were timed, that were doing the exact same things they'd been doing, but in a way that created artistry, in a way that created rhythm, in a way that created a team. I'm a huge Greg Popovich fan, and that's what he does. It's just, the same person can be leading, a different group, a different leader can lead the same people and you can have different results. And so to me, this is creating that rhythm and supporting your teachers in a way that says, you, you have the gifts to do this and, and we need them. And so that's how I see this. Now, I, there is a day soon that the results have to show that it's working, right? Real soon. And, and I'm praying this is it. It seems wise, it seems really wise. And we're here to support.
I appreciate what you said, because I think that, that when you talk about that team working together, in this case, it's not just, my mic went off. There we go. It's about the, the school team working together too and with those, that consistency among teachers in that building. And so you reminded me of that when you talked about the team, the basketball team and, so I guess their basketball.
Well, I remember coming into one of my first meetings and several different campus administrators said, we just have different kids, we have different experiences and so we have to do a different system. And I was mortified by that, right? I mean, it's like, you know, you, I, I used to watch Midway Peewee football because they, their high school coaches came to coach the Peewee football team and then they did that in elementary school and then they did it in middle school and then they did it in high school and guess what? They were really good back then. And that's what you're doing, I think, is, is creating a system that by the time you get to the next level, oh yeah, it's the same expectation. Or you go to the next campus, oh, this is the same expectation. And in time, hopefully real soon, we see that. And we're going to look for some reports this summer.
Just a heads up, Mr. Ochoa.
When you say data informed, who's inputting the data? Is it teachers, administrators?
It really kind of is reliant on what system you're talking about, but it's collectively, it depends on what facet you would need, like. So the fidelity checks are being done by administrators, campus leaders, things like that nature. If you're talking about the data that is formed, like during the intervention piece of it, there is a piece of it that, like at the tier-two level, we call the daily behavior report card. And it is basically just a way of giving really good constructive corrective feedback to students about targeted areas of behavior. And so they're rating it on a scale and so the teachers talk to the student about it and so they're giving them and they're just inputting a number that they can either put it on a piece of paper or on a QR code, kind of depending on how the campus is implementing that stuff. I mean, not implementing that stuff, but implementing the intervention. And if they're doing it on paper or there's a digital copy, it's, teachers are giving feedback to students, we're just monitoring to make sure that we're giving it in the intervals that the student is needing at the tier-two and tier-three level. Discipline data is entered by anyone, teachers, administrators, whoever's needing to do the discipline code. So there's different way, there's different facets of that data informed that it depends on the role that you have on the campus of who's entering it.
What, what is the time commitment like for a teacher per student? My concern is that, is that, I mean, I, I understand why it's important, but when a teacher hears, you're going to have to start doing this along with everything else. Unless, unless they're bought in, it's going to be a, a challenge.
Yes, I, yes, that is one of the challenges that we're having, but it's working it into the daily interaction, because they're talking to kids and they're giving feedback to kids. And so it is very much a click of a button or, and I, so I wouldn't even think per student that it would be five, 10 minutes of the day, if that. I mean, it's just basically, you, you talk to the kid, you're clicking a button, it's not a, or I'm making a checkmark on a piece of paper. We're more, we're more concerned about, did you give the feedback to the student about what you saw about the behavior today and those intentional conversations and connections with the kids?
May I have one more question?
Yes, Mr. Patton.
People are jumping on my questions here. Is this building on from Leading with the Heart, from what we did last year, from our focus from last year? Is this the natural next step? Because I see the connections. Are we, are we following the things that we, we worked on last year? And is this adding on to it?
Want to take that one?
One of the things that I appreciate the most about our district is that we are intentionally interdependent in making sure that we are consistent in what our values are and what our expectations are at the central office level. And we do that in partnership with our, our campus leaders and their staff members. So, yes, that leadership definition framework that talks about leading with heart or for results or with character, all of that is language that is infused into the overall instructional approach. And then as you go campus by campus, that's where you're going to see those particular camp, community nuances of what that looks like. So as Christie mentioned before, you might hear about grit or you might hear about pride or you might hear safe, respectful and responsible, but it's all coming together within those consistent expectations of how we do things here.
I think that might be the best question of the night, Mr. Patton.
How about it be the last?
Because.
I'm leaving.
I'm looking, I'm looking for my lead for From the Heart speech that I gave to the staff, I don't know if I have it in front of me, not this last year, but the year before. And the biggest part of that's focusing on students. And this, this system focuses on students and connections with students and it is about getting results and you've got to, you've got to get, you've got to get to the heart before you can get the results, right? So if you're just correcting kids, disciplining kids, you're not going to, you're not going to get the progress that you want. You've got to, you've got to have the relationship and you've got to have some other strategies in your bag and that's when you get, that's when you get those results. So I, I'd say it's leading from the heart, it's leading for results and definitely leading with character, so it fits completely with the values we set for leadership in the district. Well, thank you. You just nailed it.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman, thank you, Dr. Warren, just really appreciate it. I do want to say, Dr. Warren, I am very impressed that you guys are working with the Meadows because they're doing a huge, very involved in a large swath of our community with the Heart of Texas Behavior Health Network. Just when, when you said that you, you know, you guys are kind of working with them, they're, they're, they're top of the line in terms of mental health, instruction, just, thank you. That, yeah, they're exceptional, so I appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item number three, announcements, Elizabeth.
Good evening, President Cordowig, Dr. Cannon, trustees. As I'm standing here, students and staff are counting down to the holiday break, but there are still opportunities to enjoy the amazing sounds of the season from our fine arts team. Our communications team just today posted an updated listing of events that are still going on through Tuesday. So if you haven't, I don't know where we're at with the challenge from Mr. Ochoa at the last meeting, but if you haven't been out to hear or to watch or to experience any of our amazing fine arts performances, there are still opportunities. Next Wednesday, December 20th, is our final day of classes for the calendar year and is also an early release day for our students. Thursday, December 21 through Friday, January 5, all Waco ISD campuses and offices are closed for some much deserved rest, relaxation and recuperation and time with family for the holidays. We'll return our staff on Monday, January 8. Principal Lozano and her team look forward to hosting a special open house for their Kendrick Elementary students and families and you're all welcome to join to walk through their new temporary campus that evening from 5 to 7. I saw a picture from our communications team of how the facilities team has put Kendrick Elementary on there, I was like, oh, great, so I'm not going to refer to it anymore as Kendrick Elementary at Indian Spring. It is Kendrick Elementary's temporary home. We will be welcoming all our students back to the school fall, the following day on Tuesday, January 9. And after an exciting week that we've spent together celebrating the construction for Waco High School, we're already ready to put on your calendar something else that we're really excited for. It's going to be on February 2nd, which will be a special day for more than just trustee Vedanya's birthday. We will be bringing the community together twice that day with the dedication of GW Carver and a celebration for the South Waco renovation construction kicking off. So stay tuned for more details, February 2nd.
Thank you. Lots of good discussion, lots of great things happening here in the district. I think Waco High topping out and just the beam signing, beam signing, we're just kind of a small taste of kind of the great things that are happening and want everyone in our district and our families to have a wonderful Christmas season, Happy New Year, get as much rest as you can, rest up, everyone's been working so hard and we're just so thankful for all of your, your hard work and this is a much deserved rest. Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Just two things. One, happy birthday to Dr. Cannon next week.
Yes.
And two, every major holiday, I have every good intention of sitting down and texting everyone Merry Christmas or Happy Birthday or Happy Thanksgiving and I, I never have time, but Merry Christmas, if you don't get that text from me.
Consider it from all of us. And with that, we're adjourned.